And has not met. And I, for one, the night of the ad hoc committee, the budget committee meeting, was not prepared to ask questions to the Hispanic Center specifically related to what I have planned to do in the ad hoc committee meeting. Also, members of this council that may have wanted to attend that ad hoc committee meeting to ask their own questions would have been denied the right that night to ask those questions because they probably were not expecting that those questions would have been asked in that type of format. So it was with that in mind that everyone on this council has the opportunity to come to that ad hoc meeting knowing its specific purpose. And I want that process to be followed. And that's what I'm asking for, and that's what I'm asking of this council tonight, is respect the process. We have an ad hoc committee forum. We're waiting for them to meet. We're waiting for them to do their due diligence. We're giving everyone on this council an opportunity to come and ask their specific questions. We'll have them answered, and then a report will be given back to this council, and then the motion on whether to restore the funding or not will come before this council properly. So I just want to be clear on that, and I just want to let everyone know that that's my intent in this, and that's where I am on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Your thoughts, Mr. Cabo? Any other discussion, Mr. Caladino or Mr. Perkins?
Your Honor, could you read the amendment again? I forgot what it is.
The amendment is to restore $27,000 to the Hispanic Center's budget in the grant agency section of the report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through you to Councilman Cabo or Councilman Riley.
Excuse me, Mr. Perkins. Unfortunately, you can't address other members of the dais with questions. Any other discussion? Mrs. Diggs, for the second and last time on this matter.
Okay. I'm a bit confused, and I, you know, I know all about due process, but I'm just a bit confused. Well, in terms of the grant agencies that met on April 27th, I thought that the Hispanic Center came and they gave their proposal, and they provided us with feedback. We provided them saying that we would give them $27,000, and that was worth this year, this fiscal year coming up, 2008, 2009. So I think that's what we all heard. But I guess I'm kind of confused about the $25,000 that was supposed to have gone to an ad hoc committee meeting. My amendment to the budget is for the budget of 2008, 2009 to amend the motion, saying I want to make the motion to amend the grant agencies' funding to include the Hispanic Center in the amount of $27,000 for the year 2008, 2009.
That motion would be out of order, Mrs. Diggs. We're on the 2000, 2000, yeah, 2008, 2008, the next budget year, correct?
But I guess--
Right, that's correct.
All right. My question, though, Mr. Mayor, is the $25,000. It was my understanding that it was really just a moot point, that the $27,000 was going to be given to the Hispanic Center. The $25,000 was for last year, and because the ad hoc committee didn't need, I guess it got kind of convoluted. So I guess we're dealing with two different figures here. Are we giving them $25,000 plus the $27,000? Because in my mind, we were only giving them the $27,000 for this upcoming fiscal year.
Okay, let me--
That was my understanding. I don't know what anybody else is understanding.
All right. Let me just take a, just a quick history, step back on how we got where we are. And this is really without any, um, uh, swaying one way or another on the question before us, with the indulgence of the council. In 2000, the last budget cycle, the '07-'08 budget, which is the current fiscal year that we're in right now, we had a grant agency review committee after a lot of discussion with all the members of the council, Republicans and Democrats, like, wanted more oversight, so we created a separate part of the budget. At that meeting, representative of the Hispanic Center came and said, "Look, we're having some challenges right now. At this time, our recommendation is you not fund us." And it was agreed at the meeting that when they were reorganized, had realigned their mission, they would come back in with a proposal to receive the funding for this fiscal year. And I'm not sure the exact number. It could be $25,000. It could, if that sounded about right. So that was the number. Ms. Cologne was hired in the fall, maybe October-ish, November?
September.
September, okay. She presented the proposal to my office around December, January. I forwarded that to the council, appointed an ad hoc committee to review the funding request for the year we're in right now. So there's that ad hoc that's out there. Mr. Riley's been appointed chairman. I believe he's done a site visit already. He's been doing some work on it, and is arranging logistics for a meeting sometime in May for this year's funding. The motion you have on the floor tonight-- Okay. So because the money was not in the budget, and had been reduced out of the budget, when I drafted the budget with Mr. Saint-Hilaire, we did not include funding for the Hispanic Center because this council now restored funding to this budget of this year. So at this point, you have a question on the floor to amend the current grant agencies' budget for next year, the '09, '08-'09 fiscal year, to add $27,000 back into the Hispanic Center. That's where we stand tonight. The other question of the $25,000 is currently waiting to me. I think Mr. Riley said at some point in May they'll be meeting to meet with Ms. Cologne and go over their mission statement and all the other relevant data and things like that. That would be a separate request, which Mr. Shinisi articulated he would not be supporting because at this point, he's supporting the future amendment. So let me summarize your comments, but that's where we are. Okay? All right. Any other discussion? Mr. Perkins?
If I could have spoke, what I would have asked was, how come the meeting wasn't called? And it's a bad pattern that we've developed over the years, is forming up ad hoc committees and not calling, as one of the public speakers mentioned here earlier.
Mr. Perkins, you're a little bit off topic there. I appreciate your thoughts. That's a discussion you have to take up offline. It's not for the dais. Any further discussion related to the amendment that's on the floor? Okay. So the amendment would be to restore $27,000 of funding back to the Hispanic Center. All those in favor of supporting the amendment restoring the funding to the Hispanic Center, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Okay. We're gonna have to raise your hands here. And one abstention, sorry. Mr. Sadi abstaining, that's easy. If you are in favor, please raise your hand. Uh, you know what? Let's have the clerk call the roll. It's easier. Okay. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Visconti--
Yes.
Shinies--
Yes.
Esposito--
Yes.
Sadi--
Say.
Cabo--
No.
Rotello--
Yes.
Diggs--
Yes.
Tycho--
No.
Arcanti--
No.
Knapp--
No.
Levy--
Yes.
Riley--
Yes.
Seaberry--
No.
Stanley.
I count ten noes, seven yeses, and two abstentions. So the motion fails. We're back to the original, um, grant agency report. Any further discussions under the grant agency report? Mr. Shinisi?
Using the, through the mayor, through the chair, using the mayor's philosophy on the Charles Ives to say, $80,000 to support 25,000 people, I'm gonna make a motion that we fund the children's aid center for $4,000 on that same theory that $4,000 is actually benefiting over five to six thousand children in the city of Danbury. So if you use that same logic, we are benefiting many of our children, and $4,000 in a $202 million budget is really, it's nothing. It's pennies on the dollar. So I'd like to make a motion that we restore the only $4,000 to the children's and family aid.
This was made and seconded by Mr. Visconti to restore $4,000 to the family and children's aid. And just for the record, I want to note that we did not fund them because their application came in after the deadline. But having said that, I'm gonna already guess that Mr. Sadi's gonna refuse himself for any discussion of participation as debate, and I want the record noted as such. Discussion about the amendment. Mr. Rotella.
Thank you, Your Honor. Where would that $4,000 come from?
That's a good question. Um, I'm sure we can find $4,000 in next year's appropriate--
Okay, I'm smoothly backed up. Did the amendment include language that determine-- Okay, all right, thank you.
Certainly, we can find it if the amendment were to pass. Further discussion about the amendment. Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All those in favor of adding the $4,000 in for family and children's aid, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, let's do a showing. Let's call the roll.
Yes.
Negerschek--
No.
Johnson--
Yes.
Uh, Caladino--
No.
Perkins--
Yes.
Visconti--
Yes.
Shinies--
Yes.
Esposito--
Yes.
Rattan--
Yes.
Cabo--
No.
Rotello--
Yes.
Diggs--
Yes.
Tycho--
Yes.
Arcanti--
Yes.
Knapp--
Yes.
Levy--
Yes.
Riley--
Yes.
Seaberry--
Yes.
Stanley.
What do you got, Madam Clerk?
I don't know.
Hold on, I got it. Nine. There'd be nine in the affirmative. Two abstentions. Uh, that would make 11. Eight, there's eight, so that would make eight negative. So motion fails. Yes. Um, further discussion related to the grant agencies. Seeing none, then I'll try your minds on adoption of the grant agency side of the budget. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed signify by saying nay. With a negatives, please raise your hand. Mr. Perkins? Mr. Shinisi? Mrs. Diggs? Mr. Riley? Mr. Levy?
Say.
One abstention. Just for the record, then, the report is adopted, but the budget is not amended to reflect those changes made to the War Memorial and the YMCA because we did not meet the 14-vote threshold for changing the budget. If somebody's welcome to change their vote if they want to, if they're really passionate about making that change, otherwise the grant agencies will stay as proposed by the mayor. Just wanted to give you that opportunity, okay? Seeing none, then we'll move back on to the-- That concludes our reports. We'll move on to the main motion. At this time, I'm going to ask the, Mr. Cabo has made a motion to adopt the budget, seconded by Mr. Seaberry. I'm just gonna ask the clerk to read the resolution into the record, setting the mill rate.
The resolution levying the property tax for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2008, and ending June 30th, 2009. Section 1, the sum of $154 million, 154 million, 126,461, representing the gross appropriation for the city of Danbury of $202,295,259 for the fiscal year of July 1st, 2008, and ending June 30th, 2009, minus indirect revenue of $44,418,798, minus use of fund balance of $3 million, minus operating transfer in of $750,000, is hereby levied and assessed on all taxable property in the city of Danbury as set forth on the annual grant list of October 1st, 2007. Section 2, accordingly, the general fund tax rate for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2008, and ending June 30th, 2009 shall be as follows. Tax rate, 21.35 mils. Section 3, the taxes levied and assessed as herein after, provided shall be payable in quarterly installments on July 1st, 2008, October 1st, 2008, January 1st, 2009, and April 1st, 2009, except for taxes levied and assessed on mobile homes, motor vehicles, and where not in excess of $100, which taxes shall be paid on July 1st, 2008, in accordance with the general statutes of the state of Connecticut, unless said dates shall have lapsed before the effective date of this resolution, in which case the tax collector shall fix the dates and installments if said dates had not been fixed herein as provided by law. Section 4, the tax collector shall cause the said taxes above levy and assessed to be inserted on the tax rolls for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2008, and ending June 30th, 2009.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we have a motion on the floor to adopt the budget, as all department reports have been reported in and accepted. Are we taking any discussion about the budget in general as a whole? Mr. Levy?
Thank you, Your Honor. First, let me start by saying the budget review process is one of the most important jobs that the common council is entrusted to do for the people of Danbury. And I, like all of you, I take this extremely seriously, and you've heard me this evening vote against many of the portions of the budget because it's more that each area of the budget certainly can be justified by department heads, but it's a general overview of the budget that is disappointing to me. The portions of the budget that we didn't talk about tonight, and I was somewhat surprised, was the $2.5 million that the mayor wants to borrow for public improvements.
Mr. Levy--
That type of borrowing seems to be--
Excuse me, Mr. Levy. We're not discussing borrowing tonight. You'll have your crack at it next month. Please keep your--
Certainly, I don't expect to talk about that in detail, but I just passed over the fact that I was surprised that I didn't see it. This is tied to a limitless direction of borrowing in this budget. The concerns I have outlined in the mayor's overview of this budget, I quote, "The city will continue to increase its outstanding debt over the next six years to adequately finance all the projects, including the current and recently approved bond issues. Outstanding debt is projected to peak around 2011 and 2012. At $133 million, when all of the debt has been issued, we will start to see a decline of $7.3 million in the year 2017 and 2018 as the debt is paid down." The mayor also said he intends to continue with an aggressive capital plan. This is just verbal code for saying, "I want to continue to borrow, spend money that will be paid for by someone else in the future." This type of commitment totally disregards the current economic climate and puts an unnecessary hardship on the Danbury taxpayers. In this budget, almost three mils of your property tax go towards paying for borrowed money. This is twice as much as it was five years ago, and it is planned to increase every year to the year 2011, 2012. In business, we borrow money with hoping to return a profit on what we borrow. In government, on the other hand, it's a non-profit organization, and we try to pay for everything we can as long as it doesn't exceed an amount that would break an annual budget, or, but typically, these items are things that can be amortized over 20 years, like roofs, school buildings, things of that nature, equipment and systems sometimes. Items that are used all the time and are recurring purchases should be due in an operating budget. Careful pre-planning of purchases saves taxpayers the cost of borrowing. And I would make examples of that, even though they're not in this budget, but when you were, if you were to buy computer parts and you were to buy them, bond them, the technology moves so fast that more than likely, the borrowed money wouldn't be paid off before the equipment was old and the technology was no longer usable. And in other items, if you were to buy things like police cars, you could stretch that buying out. You know that you have a fleet of 60 cars. If you bought 20 cars every three years, and the life expectancy of the cars were three years, there's no reason why you couldn't pay for those upfront.
Mr. Levy, you're way off topic here. Perhaps if you want to save some of those comments for next month when we look at that borrowing, it'd be good, but you're way off the course.
Well, this budget--
All right, there's nothing in your, what's in front of you today about--
I didn't say this budget--
Excuse me. I have the floor at this moment. There's nothing in there about buying police cars. You'll have your opportunity to address that the next meeting, but try to keep your comments to the question I had.
Well, I am keeping my comments on this, talking about generally how you, this is constructed and reading from the narratives of the budget that you put in there. The idea of borrowing to close the gap, which I addressed in the capital portion of the budget at the subcommittee, to cover a gap in capital project is misleading, that over the years, capital budget projects are paid by federal government, and they're paid by state government, and you have to have them a five-year plan, but many of those issues never, the taxpayer never pays for himself. Therefore, I cannot support this budget for two main reasons. The first is because it guarantees taxpayers a minimum property tax of 6% per year till the year 2006. And many of us will pay a lot more than that as the phase-in takes place over the next three years. The second reason is relatively simple, and everybody's aware of it. The second reason is that the country is in an economic recession, unemployment in the state is at a five-year high, and we have thousands of homes foreclosed on. The groceries and utility prices have all gone up, and the last thing that Danbarians need is an increase in their taxes. We don't live in a vacuum in the city of Danbury. We're subject to what happens in the state and in the country. And throughout New England, all of the New England states are running in the red. And I see an article with even Jody Ralph saying that the state will adopt last year's budget and go forward on that because they understand the impact of increasing taxes. It will be counterproductive in this community, as it has been in many others. So I will be voting against this, and I think I owe it to the taxpayers to do that.
Thank you. Further discussion related to the budget? Mr. Perkins?
Thank you, Your Honor. It's all been said. Increased gasoline prices, increased food costs, our standard of living, for the most part, is starting to go down. We should really be curtailing our spending, not increasing our taxes by 6%. I don't know of anyone who gets a 6% salary increase, except some of our select department heads. Um, because spending is just unconscionable. I think it's primarily due to poor planning and lack of accountability. Our taxpayers really can't afford this budget. And I sometimes think to myself, how can I even pay my own property taxes, being a property owner? I really can't put this additional burden on the taxpayers of this city, and I'll be voting no for this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Further discussion? Mr. Cabo?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just, at this time, would like to take the opportunity to thank all my fellow council people for the, what I think was a wonderful job that you did in accommodating your respective committees and the work that you did in researching your questions and your facts and your figures. And I couldn't be prouder of this body as a council for the work that they did in getting this budget to this point. I just want to say thank you to all of you for making the time and taking the time out of your schedules and being as attentive to this as you have been, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cabo, for the discussion. And I'll try your minds on the-- Mr. Sadi?
Thank you, Your Honor. My concerns of the budget I laid out after the committee reports of Board of Education and the Department of Public Works, and just note those for the record. Thank you.
Mr. Sadi? Further discussion? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds on the adoption of the budget. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, signify by saying nay.
Nay.
With a negatives, please raise your hand. That would be Mr. Perkins, Mr. Visconti, Mr. Shinisi, Mr. Esposito, Mr. Sadi, Mr. Rotella, and Mr. Levy. Just, that would be seven negative, right? Seven negative. That would be 12 in the affirmative. Just for the record, having not reached the 14-vote threshold, none of the changes that were made in the reports are adopted at this time, but the budget stands adopted. Madam Clerk, item 21, please.
Phase-in of, phase-in of October 1st, 2007.
It's a pleasure, counsel. Councilman Cabo?
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we receive the communication and adopt the resolution which would give the city of Danbury its ability to exercise the option to allow the gradual increase of the assessed values, property values, according to Section 12-62 of the Connecticut General Statute.
This was made and seconded by Mr. Shinisi under discussion regarding the phase-in. Mr. Shinisi?
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, with the chair, this is Peter, the Finance Director. Can you just give a brief overview of how a phase-in will actually take place, and by giving examples of assessment, not this year, but also how the entire phase-in will go through? Just put a people in the audience, and also anybody who is maybe watching.
Director of Finance?
The phase-in will occur very similarly to the way it occurred the last time it, the reinvestal took place. If, for example, you had a property that the fair market value was $100, per state statute, that is going to be assessed at $70, all right? So your full assessment would be $70. And if a gradual phase-in over four years, we wouldn't phase it in, or we wouldn't assess it at $70, we would assess it at a portion of that. And we would assess it at, I think, we would start off, and I'll just pick a number, I don't have it offhand, or I don't know the exact number, but let's just say 55%. So it would be $55, or $55 it would be. And then the next year would be, whatever the number is, $59. And then the next year would be $63 or $64, and then the following year would be $70. We'd bring it up in the fourth year at 70, full assessment value, and that's how the phase-in would work, all right? So what it does is it eases in just the full value, okay? Did I answer your question?
Thank you, Mr. Saint-Hilaire. Any other discussion regarding the phase-in? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds on adopting the phase-in. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Passes unanimously. Tony 2 through 24 are consent. Madam Clerk, item 25, please.
Resolution, FEMA Fire Department Grant to Honorable Mark B. Bowden, you the county council, from David Saint-Hilaire, Director of Finance. Attached for your review is a resolution that will allow the city of Danbury Fire Department to apply for and accept funding from Federal Emergency Management Agency, which is FEMA, for the purchase of equipment and implementation of a wellness and a physical fitness program. The federal funding for this grant will be $462,432, with the city contributing an additional $115,608 as per grant guidelines. The county council is respectfully requested to consider this resolution at this next meeting.
Effectively considered. Madam Clerk, what's your pleasure, counsel? Councilman Johnson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Move to receive the communication and adopt the resolution.
Seconded. This was made and seconded by Councilman Negerschek. Any discussion about the FEMA grant? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have the motion carried unanimously. Madam Clerk, Mr. President, department reports.
Thank you, Your Honor. This time, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the reading of the department reports as all members have copies, and copies are on file in the city clerk's office.
This was made and seconded by Mr. Perkins to waive the reading of the reports. As long as there's a copy, any discussion of the department reports? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All those in favor of department reports, please-- Oh, Mr. Shinisi?
[inaudible]
Go ahead, clerk.
Through the chair, the Chief Baker. Can let him sit back there, all comfortable.
Chief?
This evening, there were certain comments regarding your report regarding traffic enforcement, how it decreased in number from one year to the next, and also regarding, you know, parking on sidewalks and those other things. Can you address those concerns?
Sure. It's due primarily to personnel. We haven't been at full strength since August of 2007. We haven't had a eligibility list since October 2007, and we probably won't have an unemployment eligibility list till August 2008. We've had about 10 people that are out with injuries, and 130 people isn't enough to police the city of Danbury and do all the extras.
Mr. Shinisi?
Begin to follow up on that. So your current strength is how much, what's your number?
We're authorized 152. We have 148 right now.
And you had 130?
With the injuries, disability applications, people on light duty.
Starting the year, I thought at one point, weren't you at least 151 at one point?
August of 2007 was the last time we were at that point.
Why, there's a lot of people going retire or they leave, or what's the?
Injuries. Injuries, retirements, resignations. We've had them all.
We've got a lot of people on the bench, chief, right?
We've got a lot of people on the bench.
Any other discussion under department reports? Seeing none then, I'll try your minds on acceptance of reports. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Mr. President?
Your Honor, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to add on item number 29.
This is made and seconded. All in favor of adding item 29, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Seconded by Mr. Negerchuk. Okay, Madam Clerk, do you have item 29? Mr.?
Mine over there.
Madam Clerk, item 29, please, Charlie.
Communication. Okay, communication from Scott Ferguson, tax collector, regarding Beaver Street Apartment Cooperative, abatement from the state of Connecticut. Please find attached a resolution regarding the State of Connecticut Real Estate Act, abatement from Beaver Street Apartments Cooperative Incorporated. This is project number 071844083, and the abatement will be in the amount not to exceed $15,000. The abatement is subject to state approval of funds for fiscal years 2007, 2008. The original application is on file for signature by the mayor upon acceptance of the resolution. Thank you for your attention to this matter, respectfully submitted, Scott M. Ferguson, tax clerk for city of Danbury.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. What's your pleasure, counsel? On the stichals.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication and adopt the resolution.
This is made and seconded by Mr. Visconti. Through Mr. Johnson, okay? Any discussion about the resolution? Seeing none then, I'll try your minds on adoption. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. At this time, I'll extend all committees and look for a motion to adjourn. Made by Mr. Rotella, seconded by Mr. Sadi, all in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Could be a lady, there you go.